The board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Alderwoman Tyus, Alderwoman Middlebrook, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Ingracia, Alderman Kotar, Alderman Gunther, Alderman Valmer, Alderwoman Martin, Alderman Honowitz, Alderwoman Murphy, Alderwoman Howard, Alderwoman Green, Alderman Oldenberg, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderwoman Davis, Alderwoman Spencer, Alderman Mohammed, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vacaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cohn, Alderman Williamson, Alderwoman Boyd, Alderwoman Navarro, President Reed.
Here.
Alderwoman Tyus, Alderman Bosley, Alderwoman Ingracia, Alderwoman Martin, Alderman Honowitz, Alderman Rhodey, Alderwoman Davis, Alderman Mohammed, Alderman Cohn, Alderman Williamson, eighteen present.
A quorum being present, we will be led today in prayer by Pastor John Watson Senior, and we also are so blessed to have the First Lady of Maple Temple here today also. I know you all know John Watson Junior because he says prayer for us quite often, but I am so honored to have with us today his mother and father, Pastor John Watson Senior and First Lady Watson. Let's give them a round of applause as they bring us prayer this morning.
We bow our heads in prayer. Father God, in the name of your darling son, Jesus Christ, we, as we have assembled in this awesome committee where so many decisions and things that affect people's lives are made, but through your grace and kindness, you have enabled these, our leaders in the community, to come together and to do those things that are necessary for a community to strive. We thank you for them, how you have watched over all of them, their families, their children, their loved ones, as they try to do the business of this city. We pray, God, that throughout this year, the last month and a year, we pray that you would bless them and reward them for their diligence, for their commitment, and give them those things that are necessary to make them happy and joyful this time of year. And above all, God, we certainly need your presence in our life and our home to give us those guidings that we need in order to deal with situations in our culture and our world today. Thank you, my loving, kind Father in Jesus' name, thank God, is amen and amen. Yes, this lovely lady standing beside me, my wife, and we're celebrating our sixty-fourth wedding anniversary as of December the fourteenth. Thank you, thank you.
Let's give them one more round of applause for that. That's amazing. As is our tradition during the holiday season and Christmas, we have with us today not only the Rosati Kane St. Louis Christmas Carol, so from the St. Louis Christmas Carolers Association, so take it away.
(Singing) Masters in this hall, here you sit today, rock from over sea, and ever I pray. Noel, 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 well, Noel sing we clear. Open our hope for the reward is God's unto dear. Noel, 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 well, Noel sing we loud. God today hath work for praise it up and cast it down the ground. Ah, 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 Noel, 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 well, Noel sing we clear. Open our hope for the reward is God's unto dear. Noel, 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 well, Noel sing we loud. God today hath work for praise it up and cast it down the ground. This is Christ the Lord, this is me, this is Christ, this is me, this is me, this is me. Noel, 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 well, Noel sing we clear. Open our hope for the reward is God's unto dear. Noel, 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 well, Noel sing we loud. God today hath work for praise it up and cast it down the ground. (Applause) (Singing) All the bells, sweet, so the bells toll, singing say, go away, Christmas is here, bringing the cheer to your little people. King, 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 down is this song, give to the little people. One seems to hear words of a cheer from everywhere filling the air. All the bells, raising a song, and they tell their tale. Giving, giving, while people sing songs of a cheer. Christmas is here. Merry, 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 this song. Merry, 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 this song. All the saints, all the saints, they're here for you every day. All the bells, sweet, so the bells toll, singing say, go away, Christmas is here, bringing the cheer to your little people. King, 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 down is this song, give to the little people. One seems to hear words of a cheer from everywhere filling the air. All the bells, raising a song, and they tell their tale. Giving, giving, while people sing songs of a cheer. Christmas is here. Merry, 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 this song. Merry, 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 this song. All the saints, all the saints, they're here for you every day. All the bells, sweet, so the bells toll, singing say, go away, Christmas is here, bringing the cheer to your little people. King, 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 down is this song, give to the little people. One seems to hear words of a cheer from everywhere filling the air. All the bells, raising a song, and they tell their tale. Giving, giving, while people sing songs of a cheer. Christmas is here. Merry, 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 this song. Merry, 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 this song. All the saints, all the saints, they're here for you every day. All the bells, sweet, so the bells toll, singing say, go away, Christmas is here, bringing the cheer to your little people. King, 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 down is this song, give to the little people. One seems to hear words of a cheer from everywhere filling the air. All the bells, raising a song, and they tell their tale. Giving, giving, while people sing songs of a cheer. Christmas is here. Merry, 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 this song. Merry, 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 this song. All the saints, all the saints, they're here for you every day. All the bells, sweet, so the bells toll, singing say, go away, Christmas is here, bringing the cheer to your little people. King, 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 down is this song, give to the little people. One seems to hear words of a cheer from everywhere filling the air. All the bells, raising a song, and they tell their tale. Giving, giving, while people sing songs of a cheer. Christmas is here. Merry, 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 this song. Merry, 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 this song. All the saints, all the saints, they're here for you every day. All the bells, sweet, so the bells toll, singing say, go away, Christmas is here, bringing the cheer to your little people. King, 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 down is this song, give to the little people. One seems to hear words of a cheer from everywhere filling the air. All the bells, raising a song, and they tell their tale. Giving, giving, while people sing songs of a cheer. Christmas is here. Merry, 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 this song. Merry, 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 this song. All the saints, all the saints, they're here for you every day. All the bells, sweet, so the bells toll, singing say, go away, Christmas is here, bringing the cheer to your little people. King, 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 down is this song, give to the little people. One seems to hear words of a cheer from everywhere filling the air. All the bells, raising a song, and they tell their tale. Giving, giving, while people sing songs of a cheer. Christmas is here. Merry, 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 this song. Merry, 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 this song. All the saints, all the saints, they're here for you every day. All the bells, sweet, so the bells toll, singing say, go away, Christmas is here, bringing the cheer to your little people. King, 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 down is this song, give to the little people. One seems to hear words of a cheer from everywhere filling the air. All the bells, raising a song, and they tell their tale. Giving, giving, while people sing songs of a cheer. Christmas is here. Merry, 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 this song. Merry, 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 this song. All the saints, all the saints, they're here for you every day. All the bells, sweet, so the bells toll, singing say, go away, Christmas is here, bringing the cheer to your little people. King, 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 down is this song, give to the little people. One seems to hear words of a cheer from everywhere filling the air. All the bells, raising a song, and they tell their tale. Giving, giving, while people sing songs of a cheer. Christmas is here. Merry, 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 this song. Merry, 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 this song. All the saints, all the saints, they're here for you every day. All the bells, sweet, so the bells toll, singing say, go away, Christmas is here, bringing the cheer to your little people. King, 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 down is this song, give to the little people. One seems to hear words of a cheer from everywhere filling the air. All the bells, raising a song, and they tell their tale. Giving, giving, while people sing songs of a cheer. Christmas is here. Merry, 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 this song. Merry, 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 this song. All the saints, all the saints, they're here for you every day. All the bells, sweet, so the bells toll, singing say, go away, Christmas is here, bringing the cheer to your little people. King, 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 down is this song, give to the little people. One seems to hear words of a cheer from everywhere filling the air. All the bells, raising a song, and they tell their tale. Giving, giving, while people sing songs of a cheer. Christmas is here. Merry, 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 this song. Merry, 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 this song. All the saints, all the saints, they're here for you every day. All the bells, sweet, so the bells toll, singing say, go away, Christmas is here, bringing the cheer to your little people. King, 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 down is this song, give to the little people. One seems to hear words of a cheer from everywhere filling the air. All the bells, raising a song, and they tell their tale. Giving, giving, while people sing songs of a cheer. Christmas is here. Merry, 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 this song. Merry, 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 this song. All the saints, all the saints, they're here for you every day. All the bells, sweet, so the bells toll, singing say, go away, Christmas is here, bringing the cheer to your little people. King, 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 down is this song, give to the little people. One seems to hear words of a cheer from everywhere filling the air. All the bells, raising a song, and they tell their tale. Giving, giving, while people sing songs of a cheer. Christmas is here. Merry, 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 this song. Merry, 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 this song. All the saints, all the saints, they're here for you every day. All the bells, sweet, so the bells toll, singing say, go away, Christmas is here, bringing the cheer to your little people. King, 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 down is this song, give to the little people. One seems to hear words of a cheer from everywhere filling the air. All the bells, raising a song, and they tell their tale. Giving, giving, while people sing songs of a cheer. Christmas is here. Merry, 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 this song. Merry, 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 this song. All the saints, all the saints, they're here for you every day. All the bells, sweet, so the bells toll, singing say, go away, Christmas is here, bringing the cheer to your little people. King, 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 down is this song, give to the little people. One seems to hear words of a cheer from everywhere filling the air. All the bells, raising a song, and they tell their tale. Giving, giving, while people sing songs of a cheer. Christmas is here. Merry, 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 this song. Merry, 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 this song. All the saints, all the saints, they're here for you every day. All the bells, sweet, so the bells toll, singing say, go away, Christmas is here, bringing the cheer to your little people. King, 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 down is this song, give to the little people. One seems to hear words of a cheer from everywhere filling the air. All the bells, raising a song, and they tell their tale. Giving, giving, while people sing songs of a cheer. Christmas is here. Merry, 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 this song. Merry, 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 this song. All the saints, all the saints, they're here for you every day. All the bells, sweet, so the bells toll, singing say, go away, Christmas is here, bringing the cheer to your little people. King, 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 down is this song, give to the little people. One seems to hear words of a cheer from everywhere filling the air. All the bells, raising a song, and they tell their tale. Giving, giving, while people sing songs of a cheer. Christmas is here. Merry, 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 this song. Merry, 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 this song. All the saints, all the saints, they're here for you every day. All the bells, sweet, so the bells toll, singing say, go away, Christmas is here, bringing the cheer to your little people. King, 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 down is this song, give to the little people. One seems to hear words of a cheer from everywhere filling the air. All the bells, raising a song, and they tell their tale. Giving, giving, while people sing songs of a cheer. Christmas is here. Merry, 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 this song. Merry, 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 this song. All the saints, all the saints, they're here for you every day. All the bells, sweet, so the bells toll, singing say, go away, Christmas is here, bringing the cheer to your little people. King, 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 down is this song, give to the little people. One seems to hear words of a cheer from everywhere filling the air. All the bells, raising a song, and they tell their tale. Giving, giving, while people sing songs of a cheer. Christmas is here. Merry, 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 this song. Merry, 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 this song. All the saints, all the saints, they're here for you every day. All the bells, sweet, so the bells toll, singing say, go away, Christmas is here, bringing the cheer to your little people. King, 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 down is this song, give to the little people. One seems to hear words of a cheer from everywhere filling the air. All the bells, raising a song, and they tell their tale. Giving, giving, while people sing songs of a cheer. Christmas is here. Merry, 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 this song. Merry, 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 this song. All the saints, all the saints, they're here for you every day. All the bells, sweet, so the bells toll, singing say, go away, Christmas is here, bringing the cheer to your little people. King, 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 down is this song, give to the little people. One seems to hear words of a cheer from everywhere filling the air. All the bells, raising a song, and they tell their tale. Giving, giving, while people sing songs of a cheer. Christmas is here. Merry, 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 this song. Merry, 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 this song. All the saints, all the saints, they're here for you every day. All the bells, sweet, so the bells toll, singing say, go away, Christmas is here, bringing the cheer to your little people. King, 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 down is this song, give to the little people. One seems to hear words of a cheer from everywhere filling the air. All the bells, raising a song, and they tell their tale. Giving, giving, while people sing songs of a cheer. Christmas is here. Merry, 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 this song. Merry, 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 this song. All the saints, all the saints, they're here for you every day. All the bells, sweet, so the bells toll, singing say, go away, Christmas is here, bringing the cheer to your little people. King, 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 down is this song, give to the little people. One seems to hear words of a cheer from everywhere filling the air. All the bells, raising a song, and they tell their tale. Giving, giving, while people sing songs of a cheer. Christmas is here. Merry, 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 this song. Merry, 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 this song. All the saints, all the saints, they're here for you every day. All the bells, sweet, so the bells toll, singing say, go away, Christmas is here, bringing the cheer to your little people. King, 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 down is this song, give to the little people. One seems to hear words of a cheer from everywhere filling the air. All the bells, raising a song, and they tell their tale. Giving, giving, while people sing songs of a cheer. Christmas is here. Merry, 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 this song. Merry, 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 this song. All the saints, all the saints, they're here for you every day. All the bells, sweet, so the bells toll, singing say, go away, Christmas is here, bringing the cheer to your little people. King, 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 down is this song, give to the little people. One seems to hear words of a cheer from everywhere filling the air. All the bells, raising a song, and they tell their tale. Giving, giving, while people sing songs of a cheer. Christmas is here. Merry, 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 this song. Merry, 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 this song. All the saints, all the saints, they're here for you every day. All the bells, sweet, so the bells toll, singing say, go away, Christmas is here, bringing the cheer to your little people. King, 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 down is this song, give to the little people. One seems to hear words of a cheer from everywhere filling the air. All the bells, raising a song, and they tell their tale. Giving, giving, while people sing songs of a cheer. Christmas is here. Merry, 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 this song. Merry, 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 this song. All the saints, all the saints, they're here for you every day. All the bells, sweet, so the bells toll, singing say, go away, Christmas is here, bringing the cheer to your little people. King, 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 down is this song, give to the little people. One seems to hear words of a cheer from everywhere filling the air. All the bells, raising a song, and they tell their tale. Giving, giving, while people sing songs of a cheer. Christmas is here. Merry, 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 this song. Merry, 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 this song. All the saints, all the saints, they're here for you every day. All the bells, sweet, so the bells toll, singing say, go away, Christmas is here, bringing the cheer to your little people. King, 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 down is this song, give to the little people. One seems to hear words of a cheer from everywhere filling the air. All the bells, raising a song, and they tell their tale. Giving, giving, while people sing songs of a cheer. Christmas is here. Merry, 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 this song. Merry, 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 this song. All the saints, all the saints, they're here for you every day. All the bells, sweet, so the bells toll, singing say, go away, Christmas is here, bringing the cheer to your little people. King, 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 down is this song, give to the little people. One seems to hear words of a cheer from everywhere filling the air. All the bells, raising a song, and they tell their tale. Giving, giving, while people sing songs of a cheer. Christmas is here. Merry, 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 this song. Merry, 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 this song. All the saints, all the saints, they're here for you every day. All the bells, sweet, so the bells toll, singing say, go away, Christmas is here, bringing the cheer to your little people. King, 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 down is this song, give to the little people. One seems to hear words of a cheer from everywhere filling the air. All the bells, raising a song, and they tell their tale. Giving, giving, while people sing songs of a cheer. Christmas is here. Merry, 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 this song. Merry, 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 this song. All the saints, all the saints, they're here for you every day. All the bells, sweet, so the bells toll, singing say, go away, Christmas is here, bringing the cheer to your little people. King, 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 down is this song, give to the little people. One seems to hear words of a cheer from everywhere filling the air. All the bells, raising a song, and they tell their tale. Giving, giving, while people sing songs of a cheer. Christmas is here. Merry, 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 this song. Merry, 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 this song. All the saints, all the saints, they're here for you every day. All the bells, sweet, so the bells toll, singing say, go away, Christmas is here, bringing the cheer to your little people. King, 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 down is this song, give to the little people. One seems to hear words of a cheer from everywhere filling the air. All the bells, raising a song, and they tell their tale. Giving, giving, while people sing songs of a cheer. Christmas is here. Merry, 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 this song. Merry, 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 this song. All the saints, all the saints, they're here for you every day. All the bells, sweet, so the bells toll, singing say, go away, Christmas is here, bringing the cheer to your little people. King, 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 down is this song, give to the little people. One seems to hear words of a cheer from everywhere filling the air. All the bells, raising a song, and they tell their tale. Giving, giving, while people sing songs of a cheer. Christmas is here. Merry, 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 this song. Merry, 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 this song. All the saints, all the saints, they're here for you every day. All the bells, sweet, so the bells toll, singing say, go away, Christmas is here, bringing the cheer to your little people. King, 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 down is this song, give to the little people. One seems to hear words of a cheer from everywhere filling the air. All the bells, raising a song, and they tell their tale. Giving, giving, while people sing songs of a cheer. Christmas is here. Merry, 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 this song. Merry, 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 this song. All the saints, all the saints, they're here for you every day. All the bells, sweet, so the bells toll, singing say, go away, Christmas is here, bringing the cheer to your little people. King, 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 down is this song, give to the little people. One seems to hear words of a cheer from everywhere filling the air. All the bells, raising a song, and they tell their tale. Giving, giving, while people sing songs of a cheer. Christmas is here. Merry, 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 this song. Merry, 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 this song. All the saints, all the saints, they're here for you every day. All the bells, sweet, so the bells toll, singing say, go away, Christmas is here, bringing the cheer to your little people. King, 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 down is this song, give to the little people. One seems to hear words of a cheer from everywhere filling the air. All the bells, raising a song, and they tell their tale. Giving, giving, while people sing songs of a cheer. Christmas is here.
You know, where they're doing the new ballpark village slate is supposed to have an onsite office there, so there should be plenty of opportunity. So, this is my special guest and hopefully all look like a great group of guys and girls. And look forward to seeing you getting in the unions and working for us.
Alderman from the seventh.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to have as my honored guest today Charlie Hinderlitter and the St. Louis Realtors Association.
Alderman from twenty-eighth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to have as my honored guest Michelle Miller from Focus St. Louis. She's the Director of the Coral Fellows Program and an old friend. And I'd also like to welcome all of the Coral Fellows who are here today to observe city government in action. So, welcome. Thank you.
Alderman from twenty-fifth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to welcome this morning as my honored guest, my committee woman Lori Lampbridge. I don't see her in here at the moment, but I know she was planning on coming down here this morning. Also, I would like to have as my honored guests Lori Grant and Chris Pickle from AT&amp;T. I'll have them as my honored guests this morning, but we're going to have some pretty in-depth conversations about this little thing called net neutrality. Look forward to having those conversations with you two in the next few weeks. But would like to have you here as my honored guest this morning in the interim while we work through this little issue. Dale Rusats as well from SLDC is my honored guest as well. Thank you.
Alderman from the fourth.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. I'd like to have as my special guest today is Lisa McNichols. Also Vernon Betts of the Sheriff Department and the entire Sheriff Department, Mr. Keith Taylor and Samuel Adams, who is not the beer bearer. Thank you.
Alderman from the fifth.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. I'd like to have as my honored guest a good friend Raquel Boyce and her son Byron, who has joined you on the dais, as well as Samuel Adams from the Carpenters Union. And also I see a lot of gentlemen over there that are currently in a program over in the Core Square Neighborhood, a construction program. I don't see you all that often, but I salute you guys for the things that you're doing. Thank you.
Alderman from fourteen.
Good morning, Mr. President and esteemed colleagues. I'd like to have as my honored guest Demetrius Alfred from Firefighters Local Seventy-Three, Sheriff Betts, Deputy Hogan behind me, Kate Cassis and Edmund Zell.
Alderman from twenty-fourth.
Thank you, Mr. President. To my left in the corner here, both from by state, I'd like to welcome Ken Franklin and Liza Farr. There they are. And I'd also like to wish everybody a happy and blessed Fourth Night of Hanukkah today. Thank you.
Alderman from the twenty-second.
Good morning again, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to have as my honored guests Gary Odenwood, Painter's District Council, Clint McBride with the Labor's Council and his wife Megan McBride. As well as his office.
Alderman from the third.
Good morning, Mr. President. How's everybody doing this morning? I would like to introduce Mr. Gary from the Painters Union. Just wanted to say we really appreciate him helping out with the Christmas party this year. We got over fifty, sixty kids bikes. So, wanted to thank the unions and just let everybody know we're helping out the city. Thank you.
Alderman from the twenty-first.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to welcome Mr. Eddie Hassan, one of the Executive Directors of MoCann and his students with MoCann, a great apprenticeship program headquartered in the Twenty-First Ward.
Everybody's probably wondering who this young man is up here with me today. This is Byron Williams and his mother, she actually, oh, there she is over here. You know, we get young people that are interested in being legislators and interested in coming into public office, and I always invite them down so they can see what we do and they can learn about our agenda. So, I'm really proud and honored today that Ms. Boyce brought her son here today so that he can see what we do. Let's give him a big round of applause and wish him well in the future. We also have with us, and I'm sure you know who this group, who all of these folks are over here today, Michelle Miller, Executive Director of Focus St. Louis, along with members of Focus St. Louis. Let's give them all a big round of applause. The Coral Fellows, thank you for the work that you're already doing and looking forward to working with you all in the future. And I know MoCann has already been introduced, but let's just introduce them one more time. Could the whole class stand up? Yeah. Let's. Want to thank Eddie Hassan, who has made an impact on a lot of our lives and that whole class. We wish you all the luck in the future. Any further introductions? Any further introductions? Alderman from tenth, like to wrap us up?
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. We're gathered here on December fifteenth, on this day in nineteen thirty-nine. Gone with the Wind premiered on this day in nineteen forty-four. Glenn Miller's plane disappeared. And on this day in eighteen fifty-four, the first street cleaner was used. But more importantly, today is ugly sweater day. And I'd like to send a personal congratulations out to Dave Swinney for not being here and not making us look at his clothes today. David, thank you wherever you're at. Thank you.
We have none.
Report of city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in Sections A, B and C of the agenda and have been placed in all Alderman's mailboxes. I have some correspondence from her honor, the mayor. Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for reappointment to the Plumbing Review Board. The reappointment of Patrick Moynihan, who resides in the Twenty-third Ward, whose term will expire on August fifteenth, twenty twenty. The reappointment of LaMarco Scales, who resides in the Fifteenth Ward, whose term will expire on August fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. The reappointment of Michael Young, who resides in the Tenth Ward, whose term will expire on August fifteenth, twenty twenty. The reappointment of Daryl Hunter, who resides in the Eighth Ward and whose term will expire on August fifteenth, twenty twenty. I respectfully request your approval of these appointments. Sincerely, Lyda Cruzen, Mayor, City of St. Louis.
Alderman from the fourteenth, you recognize on the mayor's appointment to the Plumbing Review Board.
Mr. President, I would like to move to appoint the following people, reappoint the following people to the Plumbing Review Board. Patrick Moynihan, LaMarco Scales, Michael Young and Daryl Hunter.
It's been moved by Alderman from the fourteenth, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-fifth. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, motion carries.
Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individual for appointment to the Central West End Community Improvement District. The appointment of David Colash, who, whose business resides in the Twenty-eighth Ward and whose term will expire on July the first, twenty twenty. I respectfully request your approval of this appointment. Sincerely, Lyda Cruzen, Mayor, City of St. Louis.
Alderman from the twenty-eighth, you recognize on the mayor's appointment to the Central West End Community Improvement District.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to approve the appointment of David Colash to the Central West End Community Improvement District.
It's been the move by Alderman from the twenty-eighth, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries.
Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individual for appointment to the Soulard Special Business District. The appointment of Molly Daughtry, 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 who resides in the Seventh Ward and whose term will expire on December thirty-first, twenty eighteen. I respectfully request your approval of this appointment. Sincerely, Lyda Cruzen, Mayor, City of St. Louis.
Alderman from the seventh, you recognize on the mayor's appointment to the Soulard Special Business District.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move to approve the mayor's appointment.
Moved by Alderman from the seventh, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-third. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries.
That's the extent of report of city officials.
Dispense with line item seven. Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? Alderman from the twenty-second, you recognize.
Mr. President, members of the board, I'd like to move Board Bill One-Ninety on the perfection calendar.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Move Board Bill One-Ninety from the informal calendar to the regular perfection calendar.
So noted.
Would anyone like to take any other bills off of any of our informal calendars? Would anyone like to take any bills off any of our informal calendars? Dispense with line items nine and ten. First reading of board bills.
Board Bill Two-Eleven, sponsored by Alderman Gunther and ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission to change the zoning of property in City Block Fifteen Thirty-Two from C Multiple Family Dwelling District to the F Neighborhood Commercial District for property at Thirty-three Oh-Six Wisconsin and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill Two Twelve, sponsored by President Reed and ordinance amending ordinance six-nine-one-nine-oh by repealing Section Two of that ordinance and enacting in lieu thereof new Section Two pertaining to the same subject matters and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill Two Thirteen, sponsored by Alderman Ogilvy and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for twelve-sixteen through twelve-eighteen Craft. Board Bill Two Fourteen, sponsored by Alderman Mohammed and ordinance approving redevelopment plan for forty-two-hundred through ninety-eight and forty-two-oh-one through ninety-nine Harris. Board Bill Two Fifteen, sponsored by Alderman Oldenburg and ordinance establishing a three-way stop site at the intersection of Devonshire and Childress, regulating all traffic traveling westbound on Devonshire at Childress and regulating all traffic traveling northbound and southbound on Childress, Childress at Devonshire and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill Two Sixteen, sponsored by Alderman Boyd and ordinance concerning certain business license regulations set for and entitled eight, which require the completion of a plat and neighborhood consent petition prior to obtaining an occupancy meant pertaining to arcades, pertaining to bathhouses, pertaining to bed and breakfast, billiard rooms, pool rooms, dance halls, pawnbrokers, public photographic studios, tattoo parlors and repealing ordinance two-six-four-four-five pertaining to the requirement of a consent petition required for certain types of businesses containing a severability clause and an effective date clause. Board Bill Two Seventeen, sponsored by Alderman Kotar and ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission pertaining to the zoning code Title Twenty-Six requiring that certain uses that are regulated by a plat and petition process under the License Code and Building Code be made a conditional use, prohibited use or used by right under the zoning code and containing a severability and an effective date clause. Board Bill Two Eighteen, sponsored by Alderman Ogilvy and Alderwoman Ingraci and ordinance authorizing the Department of Streets to develop and promulgate rules and regulations with the approval of the Board of Public Service consistent with Chapter Seventeen of Revised Code and other applicable law to facilitate the regulation of bike sharing as defined herein. That's the extent of our first readings.
Alderman from the third, you recognize.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
To, for the purposes of introducing.
Board Bill Two Eighteen. I'd like to suspend the rules to introduce Board Bill Two Eighteen.
Is Board Bill Two Eighteen on everyone's.
Two Nineteen, I'm sorry.
Okay. Board Bill Two Nineteen is, Board Bill Two Nineteen on everyone's desk?
Yes, sir.
All right. It's been moved by Alderman from the third, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-first. That we suspend our rules for the purposes of introducing Board Bill Two Nineteen. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus.
Aye.
Alderman, Alderwoman Oldenburg.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderwoman Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Ingracia.
Aye.
Alderman Kotar.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
Alderman Valmer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Martin.
Aye.
Alderman Honowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Green.
Aye.
Alderman Oldenburg.
Aye.
Alderman Rhodey.
Aye.
Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis.
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderman Mohammed.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Vaccaro.
Aye.
Alderman Ogilvy.
Aye.
Alderman Cone.
Aye.
Alderman Williamson.
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderwoman Navarro.
Aye.
President Reed.
Aye.
Alderwoman Tyus.
Aye.
Alderwoman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Alderman Honowitz. Alderwoman Murphy.
Aye.
Alderman Kennedy. Twenty-six, aye vote.
By your vote, you stay in the motion. Alderman from the third, and introduce Board Bill Two Nineteen. Madam Clerk, please place Board Bill Two Nineteen at tail end of first reading count.
So noted.
Alderman from the sixth, you recognize.
Mr. President, I'd like to move to suspend the rules to our first read, Board Bill Two Twenty.
It's been moved by Alderman from the sixth, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-fifth. That we suspend our rules for the purposes of introducing Board Bill Two Twenty. Alderman from the sixth, for the introduction of Board Bill Two Twenty.
Yes, Two Twenty.
Okay. It's been moved, the seconded by Alderman from the sixth. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus.
Aye.
Alderwoman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley.
Aye.
Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Ingracia.
Aye.
Alderman Kotar.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
Alderman Valmer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Martin.
Aye.
Alderman Honowitz. Alderwoman Murphy.
Aye.
Alderwoman Howard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Green.
Aye.
Alderman Oldenburg.
Aye.
Alderman Rhodey.
Aye.
Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis.
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderman Mohammed. Ald, Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Vaccaro. Alderman Ogilvy.
Aye.
Alderman Cone.
Aye.
Alderman Williamson.
Aye.
I didn't hear you.
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderwoman Navarro.
Aye.
President Reed.
Aye.
Alderwoman Tyus.
Aye.
Alderwoman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderwoman Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderman Honowitz. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis.
Aye.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Williamson.
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Aye.
Twenty-six, aye vote.
By your vote, you stay in the motion. Alderman from the sixth, and introduce Board Bill Two Twenty. Madam Clerk, please place Board Bill Two Twenty at tail end of the first reading count.
So noted.
Madam Clerk, please read the forward for Board Bills Two Nineteen and Two Twenty.
Board Bill Two Nineteen, sponsored by Alderman Bosley and ordinance pertaining to special use districts establishing the NGA Protection and Enhancement Zone Special Use Districts, providing definitions and findings pertaining to said district, further providing use and conditional use regulations for said district and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill Two Twenty, sponsored by Alderwoman Ingraci and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for Locust Jefferson area, finding that the area blighted is defined in Section Ninety-nine Point Three Two Zero of the Revised Statutes of Missouri. Of the Revised Statutes of Missouri and consistent with the plan, redevelopment plan. That's the extent of our first readings.
Madam Clerk, please sign Board Bill Two Twelve to Public Safety.
So noted.
Two Nineteen to Hertz.
So noted.
And Two Twenty to Ways and Means. Reference to Committee.
To the Public Safety Committee, Board Bills Two Sixteen and Two Twelve. To the Streets Committee, Board Bills Two Fifteen and Two Eighteen. To the Neighborhood Development Committee, Board Bill One Thir, uh, Two Thirteen. To the Housing Committee, Board Bills Two Eleven, Two Fourteen, Two Seventeen and Two Nineteen. And to the Ways and Means Committee, Board Bill Two Twenty. That's the extent of reference to Committees.
Second reading.
The following board bill were reported out of Transportation and Commerce Committee, Board Bill Two Twen, uh, Two Oh-Eight, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis and ordinance recommended and approved by the Airport Commission, Comptroller and Board of Estment and Apportion making certain findings with respect to the transfer of up to thirteen million, seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and nine, sixty-nine dollars of excess money that the city intends to transfer from the Debt Stabilization Fund to the Airport Revenue Fund in accordance with Section Five Sixteen B of the Lambert-St. Louis International Airport Indenture of Trust between the city as grantor and UMB Bank as trustee dated as of October fifteenth, nineteen eighty-four and amended and restated as of July the first two thousand and nine and amended and supplemented, authorizing transfer in an amount not to exceed thirteen million, seven hundred and seventy-seven, twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred, sixty-nine dollars from the DSSF into the Revenue Fund during the fiscal year beginning July the first, two thousand and seventeen to be used to make funds available to mitigate rates on an annual basis during the term of the Airport Use and Lease Agreement commencing July the first, two thousand and sixteen and containing a severability and an emergency clause. Board Bill Two Nineteen, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis and.
Or Two Oh-Nine.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Two Oh-Nine, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis and ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the Director of Airports and the Comptroller to enter into the, and entering to, and the Second Amendment to the Fuel System Lease and Use Agreement, AL Four-Four-Two, to the St. Louis Lambert International Airport Sys, Fuel System Lease and Use Agreement between the city and STL Fuel Company LLC dated December the twenty-second, two thousand and eleven and amended by the First Amendment to the Fuel System and Lease and Use Agreement dated April the seventh, two thousand and fourteen. The Second Amendment, which is attached hereto as Amendment One and made a part hereof, was approved by the city's Airport Commission and its terms are more fully described in Section One of this ordinance containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. That's the extent of our second readings.
With dispensable line items fourteen and fix, fifteen, our board bills for perfection.
Board Bill One-Ninety. Sponsored by Alderman Boyd and ordinance pertaining to the administration and use of the Parking Meter Fund and repealing subsection B dash two of Section Two of Ordinance Seven-O-Six-One-One.
Alderman from the, Alderman from the twenty-second, you recognize on the perfection of Board Bill One-Ninety.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move for perfection of Board Bill One-Ninety.
Moved by Alderman from the twenty-second. Entertain a second on that motion. Seconded by Alderman from the twenty-first and twenty-third. Alderman from the twenty-second, please proceed.
Mr. President, I think I spoke quite a bit last week. My colleagues asked if we can get a legal opinion from the City Council's office in reference to Board Bill One-Ninety, and I'll just entertain whatever questions that our colleagues may have this morning.
All right. Any further discussion? Alderman, it turns your mic around. Everybody borrowing this. Alderman from the first, you, you recognize.
Mr. President, members of the board, I have served in some capacity with Julian Bush for twenty-some-odd years. If this is a legal opinion, then my nine-year-old niece can write a, this is gobbledygook. It basically says, and I know that he can write a legal opinion, it says, "I'm not going to get in it 'cause it is in litigation, and if this is illegal, so was the other board bill." That's what it says. It does not give any in-depth analysis of what we're looking for. When I read this, it goes on to say that difference does, let me see, what is, what is, how does he use this? The statute is indeed different, but different is not necessarily the same as inconsistency. But then he doesn't go into any analysis about this particular bill. If it's different or if it's inconsistent, what is your analysis of that? I thought that was the whole point of asking for a legal opinion. This is dancing all around it. This is not the Julian Bush I know. This is not the kind of opinion that he was writing. So, I guess when you become the city councillor, you write what people want to hear or you try as hard as you can not to say anything to offend the people who want to hear it 'cause this is not a legal opinion. And I, I want to say, I stand in opposition to this. I, I kind of agree with Mr. Bush. I did talk to him about this 'cause I've been doing research about this whole thing going back to the original ordinances, which is real interesting 'cause this got set up back, the Parking Commission got set up back in the fifties, and it was by a request by the city of St. Louis. I'm actually digging around, looking for the original city councillor's opinion 'cause that will be really interesting since we are the ones that asked for this to be set up this way. So, there will probably be a counterargument as to why this is legal. But I could see since, Mr. Bush did tell me, myself, that he thought, he agreed with the opinion that we could go forth with this. But when I asked him about the prior city councillor opinions and what they said, he said he hadn't read any of those and he didn't know. And so, I just think that if we're going forth with this, we ought to have everything before us. If it really is legal, then we go forth with it and do it, and if it isn't, we shouldn't keep playing these games. I think this whole thing is, and I've said this to the Alderman from the twenty-second, I think is not in the best interest of the city. Unless, of course, if we're gonna go after money, I want to go after that five million dollars of illegal overtime from the police. I want to get into the money that the airport has in their enterprise account. I want to get into the money that the Water Department has in their enterprise account. There's a lot of money. I want to look at how, when we do, now, the firepeople, firemen are not gonna like this. We didn't always used to send EMS with the firepeople when they went out to every fire. We waste a lot of money. People not gonna like that when we do that because a lot of times you do not need firemen and EMS to be going. So, there's a lot of things that we're going to get into, looking at who has money that they shouldn't have that we ought to be doing. I want to know why we're paying two police chiefs, okay? That's what I want to know. I want to know how we spend all of this money, and then we got certain people that we are going after and saying, "I'm trying to do this 'cause we need money." If we need money, we need to go into each and every account and each and every department, and we need to make them be accountable for it. And I also want to stop paying these secret amounts of large money whenever the police shoot and kill somebody, then we make these secret deals of how much we're paying people. I want to know how much we spend every year on paying off citizens when people have been killed by the police and then we have to make an agreement with them in court that we're gonna settle. I want to know how many other secret payments we have made when we have had court settlements. So, I want to know all of this. I don't want this to just be a witch hunt, okay? If we really are trying to get money, there are a lot of pots of money, we can get it, and so we should start going after that. But really, I want to know if this is really legal. I don't think this is befitting of Mr. Bush. I think that he skirted the issue, and I really do want to know if it's something legal. I'm going to vote no until I can find out what the original city councillor's opinion and why we asked to set this up in the first place. And now after, from, what is this, from the fifties, sixty-something years, now all of a sudden, this is illegal the way it was set up. I have problems with the whole way this is being done.
All right. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the, Alderman from the twenty-second, you recognize, close.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I agree with some of the comments that the Alderman from the first made, but I want to clear something up. This is absolutely not a witch hunt. This is about good policy and this is about following the rules and doing it right. The only thing I'm asking for is to use the current state statute and use common sense in how we calculate how much revenue is given back to the city of St. Louis. This board bill clarifies the ordinance that's currently on the books, which does not take in consideration any operating expenses, which would thereby create a larger amount of money to potentially be returned to the city of St. Louis. I passed out to all my colleagues the, the city council opinion and an analysis. And for example, if you look on the page that has the analysis on it and you go down to where it says in the middle, maximum general revenue fund transfer allowed by state law, just using the state law as it is, it says five point eight, almost five point nine million dollars, which means technically, based on our current ordinance, we could have received an additional four point two compared to just one point six that has been transferred. So we're trying to be practical, we're trying to be fair. I've listened to some of the outcry. So now, the only thing we're doing is stopping the Parking Commission from taking depreciation prior to giving us our fair forty percent. There's a cash balance that's left over at the end of the year, net fund balance. It's a cash balance. That is what our share should come from, not after you do an audit and take depreciation. If you took three million dollars of depreciation, that's one point two million dollars that you did not transfer to the City General Revenue Fund. That's not fair. That's not a witch hunt. That's being practical, and that's following the rules. Also, the city councillor's opinion, you know, the Alderman kind of pointed out, it basically says, "If this is wrong, then the current ordinance is wrong, and the ordinance prior to that in nineteen ninety is wrong." But at the end of the day, he does suggest that, he says, "And I observe that the validity of the statutes is now the subject pending litigation, not the ordinance, but the state statutes." That's totally separate, and what I would like to do is encourage the Alderman to do her due diligence, which I know she does, and if she goes back and look at the state constitution, it prohibited the General Assembly from doing what they did, because they, we should, the Parking Commission should not be in its current place. It should be part of city government, not some Parking Commission that's appointed by your position based on state statute. So with that, Mr. President, I close. Thank you.
All right, thank you. It's been moved by Alderman from the twenty-second, second by Alderman from the twenty-first and twenty-third, that we perfect Board Bill 190. There's been a request for a roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus?
No.
Alderman Middlebrook?
Aye.
Alderman Bosley? Alderman Moore? I didn't hear you.
No.
Alderman Hubbard?
Aye.
Alderman Ingracia?
Yes.
Alderman Kotar?
Aye.
Alderman Conway? Alderman Gunther? Alderman Vollmer?
Aye.
Alderman Martin?
Aye.
Alderman Honowitz? Alderman Murphy?
Aye.
Alderman Howard?
Aye.
Alderman Green?
No.
Alderman Oldenburg?
Aye.
Alderman Rhodey?
Aye.
Alderman Kennedy? Alderman Davis?
Aye.
Alderman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Mohammed?
Aye.
Alderman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderman Vaccaro?
Aye.
Alderman Ogilvy?
No.
Alderman Cone?
Aye.
Alderman Williamson?
No.
Alderman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderman Navarro?
Aye.
President Reed? Alderman Middlebrook? Alderman Bosley? Alderman Gunther? Alderman Honowitz? Alderman Kennedy? Alderman Cone? Alderman Navarro? Seventeen, aye votes, eight, no votes.
By a vote, you stay in the motion, Alderman from the twenty-second, and perfected. Board Bill 190.
That's the extent of board bills for our perfection.
Madam Clerk, earlier, I assigned Board Bill 220 to HUDs, placed Board Bill 220 in Neighborhood Development.
So noted. Board Bills, 195, 196, 197, committee substitute, 198, 199, 202 as amended, 25, 26, 105, 141,
Alderman from the twenty-second, you, you recognize on the motion for the third reading consent calendar.
I move for, um-
Third reading, final passage of the aforementioned-
Third reading, final passage of all bills on the third reading consent calendar.
Been moved by Alderman from the twenty-second, second by Alderman from the twenty-third. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus?
No.
Alderman Middlebrook?
Aye.
Alderman Bosley? Alderman Moore?
Aye.
Alderman Hubbard?
Aye.
Alderman Ingracia?
Aye.
Alderman Kotar?
Aye.
Alderman Gunther? Alderman Vollmer?
Aye.
Alderman Martin?
Aye.
Alderman Honowitz? Alderman Murphy?
Aye.
Alderman Howard?
Aye.
Alderman Green? Alderman, Alderman Oldenburg?
Aye.
Alderman Rhodey?
Aye.
Alderman Kennedy? Alderman Davis? Alderman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Mohammed?
Aye.
Alderman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderman Vaccaro?
Aye.
Alderman Ogilvy?
Aye.
Alderman Cone? Alderman Williamson?
Aye.
Alderman Boyd? Alderman Navarro?
Aye.
President Reed?
Aye.
Alderman Middlebrook? Alderman Bosley? Alderman Moore? Alderman Gunther?
Aye.
Alderman Honowitz? Alderman Kennedy? Twenty-five, aye votes, one, no vote.
By a vote, you stay in the motion, Alderman from the twenty-second, and third read, and finally pass the aforementioned bills.
That's the extent of third reading consent.
Third reading, report of engrossments.
Board Bill 138, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, and on its authorizing and directing the mayor and the comptroller to execute and deliver the fifth supplemental trust indenture, authorizing and directing the taking of other actions and approval and execution of other documents as necessary or desirable to carry out and comply with the intent hereof superseding provisions or prior ordinances of the city to the extent inconsistent with the terms hereof and containing a severability clause.
Alderman from the seventeenth, you recognize on third reading and final passage of Board Bill 138.
Yes, Mr. President, I move that we pass Board Bill 138.
Moved by Alderman from the seventeenth, second by Alderman from the tenth. Any discussion? It's been, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus?
No.
Alderman Middlebrook?
Aye.
Alderman Bosley?
Aye.
Alderman Moore?
Aye.
Alderman Hubbard?
Aye.
Alderman Ingracia?
Aye.
Alderman Kotar?
Aye.
Alderman Gunther?
Aye.
Alderman Vollmer?
Aye.
Alderman Martin?
Aye.
Ald, Alderman Honowitz? Alderman Murphy?
Aye.
Alderman Howard?
Aye.
Alderman Green? Alderman Oldenburg?
Aye.
Alderman Rhodey?
Aye.
Alderman Kennedy? Alderman Davis? Alderman Spencer? Alderman Mohammed? Alderman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderman Vaccaro?
Aye.
Alderman Ogilvy? Alderman Cone?
Aye.
Alderman Williamson?
Aye.
Alderman Boyd?
Aye.
Ald, Alderman Navarro?
Aye.
President Reed?
Aye.
Alderman Middlebrook? Alderman Honowitz? Alderman Kennedy? Alderman Ogilvy? Twenty-four, aye votes, one, no vote.
By a vote, you stay in the motion, Alderman from the seventeenth, and third read, and finally pass. Board Bill 138.
Board Bill 201, committee substitute, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, and on its determining that the tax increment financing plans listed in Exhibit A are making satisfactory progress under the proposed time schedule for completion of projects therein, whereas the tax increment financing plans and projects listed in Exhibit A were approved by the Board of Alderman of the, of the city by ordinance.
Alderman from the seventeenth, you recognize on third reading, final passage of Board Bill 201, committee substitute.
Yes, Mr. President, I move for third reading and final passage.
It's been moved by Alderman from the seventeenth, second by Alderman from the twenty-first. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please, Ald, Alderman from the first.
Look around.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay. Um, um, and, and I just got a question. I'm not opposed to this. I have a kind of question that maybe the Alderman from the seventeenth can answer, if he will yield.
Alderman from the seventeenth, will you yield for questions?
Certainly will attempt to answer.
Alderman from the first, please proceed.
So I know that the state statutes require that every five years that we do a report about, which I had blown up because that thing that was attached to the board bills you couldn't read. So do you know what happens if we're not making good progress? Is that something you know? Or if one of these projects are not progressing the way they're supposed to?
That's a good question. I don't know. I obviously sponsored this at the behest of the folks over at SLDC.
Right. But, but have you ever had the opportunity to know if maybe something that didn't progress? And, and do we just try to get them back on track? Just don't know? If you don't know, you just don't-
No, no, I don't. I, I really don't.
Okay.
What happens, I, I, from the financial standpoint, if they're not making progress at the end of twenty-three years, the, you know, the TIF ends and the revenue falls back into the city.
Right.
Uh, and I presume what they mean by progress is, is the project completed, but I believe that both in TIFs and SLDC, they have to have a certificate of-
Completion.
Completion prior to en nearing the benefit of whether it's tax abatement or TIF.
Well, because I think, I think they'd make it so you have to do it every five years. So what I was thinking is that if you're not on track, maybe they do some kind of guidance or help you get back on track, or direct you to know that if you don't finish, because, you know, they're in the middle of the project, so I don't think they would just pull it out from under you.
At the, at the HUDs committee hearing, we had some discussion about the quality of the data, and according to the folks over at SLDC, this is all the data that we have to report by state statute. I think the committee, actually, this goes beyond it, because we had some, some additions that we added last year. I think there's, can be an improvement on, on whether or not, on how we measure the progress of TIFs, so we can certainly add to this, since it's a local ordinance, but this is, this actually exceeds the minimum requirement that, that's required by state statute.
I'll, I'll call over to SLDC, 'cause I just wanted, and maybe I might have to talk to one of the state reps or somebody, since it's, it's a state statute. I just wondered what happened if somebody wasn't progressing, or if they just sitting on it, 'cause, you know, and not moving or doing anything. So, thank you. I have no further questions.
All right. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? It's been moved by Alderman from the seventeenth, second by Alderman from the twenty-first, that we third read and finally pass Board Bill Number 201, committee substitute. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus?
Aye.
Alderman Middlebrook?
Aye.
Was that an aye?
Aye.
Alderman Bosley?
Aye.
Alderman Moore? Alderman Hubbard?
Aye.
Alderman Ingracia?
Aye.
Alderman Kotar?
Aye.
Alderman Gunther?
Aye.
Alderman Vollmer?
Aye.
Alderman Martin?
Aye.
Alderman Honowitz? Alderman Murphy?
Aye.
Alderman Howard?
Aye.
Alderman Green?
Aye.
Alderman Oldenburg?
Aye.
Alderman Rhodey?
Aye.
Alderman Kennedy? Alderman Davis?
Aye.
Alderman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Mohammed?
Aye.
Alderman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderman Vaccaro?
Aye.
Alderman Ogilvy? Alderman Cone?
Aye.
Alderman Williamson?
Aye.
Alderman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderman Navarro?
Aye.
President Reed? Alderman Honowitz? Alderman Kennedy? Alderman Ogilvy? Twenty-six, aye votes.
By a vote, stay in the motion, Alderman from the seventeenth, and third read, and finally pass. Board Bill 201, committee substitute.
That's the extent of third reading, report of engrossment and final passage.
Report of enrollment.
Board Bills, 195, 196, 197, committee substitute, 198, 199, 202 as amended, 25, 26, 105, 141, 138, 200, and 201, committee substitute.
All other business being suspended, president shall have an open session to fix First reading resolutions.
Resolution 184, sponsored by Alderman Navarro, the Board of Alderman approved the 2018 Westminster Lake Special Business District Budget.
Alderman from the twenty-eighth, you recognize on first reading of resolution 184.
Mr. President, I request unanimous consent of resolution number 184.
Hearing no objection, please proceed, Alderman.
I move for adoption of resolution number 184, which approves the 2018 budget for the Westminster Lake Special Business District.
Been moved by Alderman from the twenty-eighth, second by Alderman from the twenty-sixth. Any discussion?
Um, I, this is pursuant to the, the statute that a budget is requested, so, and to be approved, and so I renew my motion to approve resolution 184.
It's been moved by Alderman from the twenty-eighth, second by Alderman from the twenty-sixth, that we adopt resolution 184. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries.
Resolution 185, sponsored by Alderman Kotar, the Board of Alderman approved the 2018 budget for the Sioux Lord Special Business District.
Well, Ald, Alderman from the seventh, you recognize on the first reading of resolution 185.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I request unanimous consent of resolution 185.
Second. Hearing no objection, please proceed, Alderman.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move to adopt- I move to adopt Resolution 185, the Soulard Special Business District.
Been moved by Alderman from the seventh, I entertain a second on that motion. Seconded by Alderman from the twenty-second and twenty-third. Any discussion? Alderman from the twenty-fourth?
Um, I'm just going to ask a question. Are we getting the budgets from every special business district in the city? Um, I don't think we are. I think they are- there are special business districts that are not submitting budgets, which they have to do according to state statute. Uh, so I think we should take a look at that. Um, but it's wonderful that the Alderman from the seventh special business district is following the law, so I think that's great. So, I support his motion. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Alderman. Thank you, Alderman. It's been moved by Alderman from the seventh, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-second. Any further discussion? Alderman from the twentieth?
The Alderwoman from the twentieth, twenty-eighth ward, excuse me, her business district is also complying.
Right. There's two of them complying.
Business district, too.
Yeah. Any- any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the twenty-fifth?
I'd like to note that the Alderwoman from the twenty-eighth just did this last week, uh, but there are several that are very much in compliance, although I believe my colleague from the twenty-fourth ward is probably more so specifically pertaining to the individual buildings that we give, uh, SIDS and other special business districts to as well, that maybe not as compliant. But I think by and large, the very big community improvement districts that, uh, represent neighborhoods and neighborhood commercial districts and- and whatnot are very much on the more compliant side of things. I will also be supporting this.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? It's been moved by Alderman from the seventh, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-second, that we adopt Resolution number eighty-five via unanimous consent. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries.
Resolution 187, sponsored by Alderwoman Spencer, this honorable Board of Aldermen directs officials and departments which were the subject of the 2010 audit conducted by the Missouri State Auditor to prepare and submit to the Board of Aldermen detailed written reports on their implementation of the recommendations set forth in the audit and whether said recommendations have been- have succeeded in addressing the issues, and to come before the Board of Aldermen at such time as may be requested by the Board of Aldermen to report on the same.
Alderwoman from the twentieth, you recognize on first reading of Resolution 187.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to move that, uh, Resolution 187 be assigned to the legislative committee.
Moved by Alderman from the twentieth, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-fourth, and Alderman from the thirteenth. Any further discussion? Alderman from the first?
Boy, I'd ask that my name be added to this because this is how a resolution should be done. Before we start asking for ten different tax audits, we ought to find out what we deal with the audits that we, uh, have had in the past. So, this is very good, uh, legislation. I appreciate it, and I'd like my name added.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Alderman from the fourteenth?
Like my name added to this resolution also.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that.
So noted.
It's been moved by Alderman, Alderman from the twentieth, uh, that we adopt Resolution 187. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Madam Clerk, please assign Resolution 187 to legislation.
So noted. That's the extent of our first reading of resolutions.
Second reading.
We have none.
Miscellaneous unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
I do not have any meetings scheduled next week. That's the extent of my announcements, no meetings.
Any further announcements? Alderman from the fourth?
Thank you, Mr. President, and the members of the board. I'd like to thank the sponsors that supported the- the Fourth Ward's Tenth Annual Breakfast with Santa. It's tomorrow, December the seven- sixteenth, at eight AM at Kennel Lee Temple. This is where we feed the children breakfast, give them the opportunity to take a picture with Santa, give them a bag of fruit and a candy cane, a bag of toys, and we fit them with coats. This is all tomorrow. I'd like to also announce that if you live in the Fourth Ward with an ID that show that you live in the Fourth Ward and need toys for your children on Sunday, December the seventeenth, from twelve noon to three PM, I will be at my office at forty-one forty-four, giving forty-one forty-four Martin Luther King, giving our toys. Lisa, you can come get a toy if you like. And also, on Thanksgiving, we were able to give out and blessed to give out over six hundred turkeys to our constituents in the Fourth Ward. We deserve a round of applause. Thank you.
Alderman from the twenty-seventh?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to remind everyone, tomorrow, we will do our ninth annual- annual build-a-bag, and we will pass our Christmas dinners to the residents of the twenty-seventh and second ward. This year, we'll pass out thirty-five hundred baskets, and Captain Ryan Cousins has taken on the job to give Christmas baskets and toys to the hundred and ninety-one victims in the city of St. Louis.
All right. Excellent. Any fur- any further announcement? Alderman from the twenty-sixth?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Tomorrow, the twenty-sixth ward will be holding our fourteenth annual carry and sharing event that will be held at Union Memorial Church. That's eleven forty-one built, so we invite all the residents in the twenty-sixth ward to come on out and enjoy the festivities. We'll be having some, uh, gifts that we'll be giving away also. This year, we, uh, didn't- was- we were really unable to work with Toys for Tots and Salvation Army. I don't know how the Fourth Ward got any toys because we didn't get any. But, uh, with the disaster relief, ran a little short with all the hurricanes that happened down in Florida and Texas and Puerto Rico. So, uh, I just want to let the kids know, no toys this year, but we'll be having some other gifts that we'll be giving away. So, that's tomorrow from twelve PM, three PM, at Union Memorial Church, uh, our fourteenth annual carry and sharing event. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Alderman from the twenty-fifth?
Thank you, Mr. President. I- I do want to invite everyone to attend the Downtown Dutchtown Business Association Holiday Event. It's next Wednesday, uh, at five thirty PM. It's taking place at the Learman Loft, which is an event space above the Urban Eats Cafe at Virginia and Merrimack. Um, I believe it's their, uh, seventh annual holiday party. Uh, they've been doing it for a while now. If you haven't been, it's a lot of fun, um, great neighbors, great food, um, and a couple beverages, too. Wouldn't hurt anyone. Uh, but, you know, come on over, uh, to Dutchtown and enjoy the holiday spirit with some of our neighbors. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Alderman from the nineteenth?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. On tomorrow, there will be a holiday, uh, festival in Strass Park, directly across the street from the Fox Theater. There will be local small businesses selling their wares. There'll be crafts, music, um, hot chocolate, number of other things. What I'd like to do is to make sure that everybody knows that when you pass that red cattle, you make sure you make a contribution for the Salvation Army. We have had a lot of unpredicted situations in our community. People find the need to be rude and disrespectful and break into churches and other places and steal the toys and things that have been collected for children, steal the food that has been collected for families. And so, we're trying to replace a lot of that right now. Urban League was hit, uh, this past Sunday night, and they stole thousands of toys that we planned for the one hundred neediest kids. It is unfathom to deal with what we're dealing with in our world, which is not supposed to be a third world country, but- and we have got to do something about it. So, I'm asking all of you to make sure that you contribute appropriately and make sure that those families who are in need have an opportunity to receive. Uh, also, I wanted to take a moment to, uh, give a belated happy birthday to, uh, Lisa McNichols. You know, she- she quietly moves about this chambers and this board and gets her job done. She's been a committed city employee for, I want to say it's twenty-eight years now?
Thirty-one.
Oh, 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 but look, it's more. She's got- she's got- she's got what it takes to be good, what we call good fabric. So, a belated happy birthday to you and a special thank you for what you do here on behalf of us and supporting us in getting our job done as well. Thank you.
Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Uh, before we move on and adjourn, I just want to, one more time, um, can I have the administrators and the, uh, leads on from Focus St. Louis and Corfels? Could you stand up to people that are working to make this program happen? Stand up and let's give you all a round of applause. Thank you. Thank you. And let's give the Corfels a round of applause. Please stand. Let's give them a round of applause. And Mocan, uh, Mocan, let's stand, let's give her- thank you. Thank you. And finally, we have, uh, with us, uh, Officer Ronald Turner, who is the new Community Outreach Officer for St. Louis Public Schools. So, I know, uh, before you leave, Mr. Turner, Officer Turner, you need to see Alderwoman Davis and Alderwoman Boyd. You have to do that before you leave. So, let's give them a round of applause. With that, Alderman from the twenty-second, you recognize on the motion to excuse.
Mr. President, members of board, I move to excuse the Alderman from the twelfth ward.
It's been moved by Alderman from the twenty-second, seconded by Alderman from the tenth. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries. Alderman from the twenty-second, you recognize on the motion to adjourn.
Yes, Mr. President, uh, members of board, I move to adjourn until January the fifth, two thousand eighteen.
Second. Been moved, okay, been moved by Alderman from the twenty-second, seconded by everybody, but we'll just say Alderman from the twenty-fifth and Alderwoman from the fourteenth. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Stand adjourned.